2019, time is 6:30. And by the way, welcome everyone that's here. We always begin our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. We would turn the time now to our Vice Mayor, Pat Gabriel, to take us through any changes in setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, do I make the motion right now, or do we delay that?
Yeah, this is just to set the agenda, right.
Okay. I would move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Wait, we have to just set the agenda. So, what we're doing right now is just setting the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. There's, I would move that the agenda be set as submitted tonight.
No changes, right.
No changes.
Is there a second? Second by Brian Schuster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set. Now we go to the next item, which is proclamations and presentations. We have one proclamation tonight, and I'd like to read that. This is a proclamation which has been brought to us by Kim Beiner, and after I've read this, Kim, would you please come forward? Thank you for being here and thank you for your hard work. Whereas Stephen Wheeler Downey and Eva Owen Downey were among the earliest pioneers to settle in Laramie, Wyoming in the late 1860s, and immediately began to work to better their community spiritually, educationally, socially, legally, and economically, whereas Eva Downey, with her family, made the arduous journey from England to Wyoming by ship, river steamer, and prairie schooner drawn by oxen. Whereas Stephen Downey served brilliantly in the Union Army during the Civil War, attaining the rank of Colonel by the age of 23. Whereas Stephen Downey served his community as Albany County Superintendent of Schools, Albany County Attorney, Treasurer, and Auditor of the Wyoming Territory and Wyoming's Territories Delegate to the U.S. Congress. Whereas Eva Downey was a charter member of the Wyoming Literary and Library Association, a precursor to the Albany County Public Library, and a founding member of the Laramie Women's Club. Whereas Stephen Downey served seven terms in the Wyoming Legislature, including one term as Speaker of the Wyoming Territory House of Representatives, and in 1873 wrote the Act Incorporating Laramie City. Whereas Stephen Downey was a passionate advocate for the Women's Suffrage Act, voting to preserve that right in 1871, and served as a prosecuting attorney in the first case in the world in which women served as jurors. Whereas Stephen Downey was the driving force behind the legislation, creating the University of Wyoming and locating it in Laramie, earning him the title of "The Father of the University." Whereas Stephen Downey served on the University of Wyoming's Board of Trustees, including as President, from 1891 to 1897. Whereas Eva and Stephen Downey raised 10 children, and all of whom attended the University of Wyoming, and several of whom distinguished themselves in such fields as education, University of Wyoming Professor June Etta Downey, politics, two-term U.S. Senator from California Sheridan Downey, and Laramie Mayor Stephen Corlett Downey, and law, nationally-renowned water-law expert Stephen Wheeler Downey. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, acting as Mayor and President of the governing body of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim July 28, 2019, as Stephen and Eva Downey Day. So, Kim, would you please come forward? I'm going to sign this, and would you please come forward? And also, if you have anything to say, we'd love to have you do that. So, go ahead.
Well, of course, I have something to say. That's kind of what I do. Mayor Shumway, thank you very much, and Council members for recognizing Stephen and Eva Downey. This came about, about two years ago. I started researching his life and wrote a book, his biography. And in the course of that, I thought it would be very wise if our community, both the county and the city, recognized their service to our community. The county signed their proclamation earlier. You've joined them, and we greatly appreciate that. There are three major sponsors of the day. They are the Albany County Historical Society, the Laramie Plains Museum, and the Laramie Area Visitor Center. We also have a host of co-sponsors, including the Council, the Board of Commissioners, the President's Office at the University of Wyoming, the Alumni Association, the Board of Trustees, the American Heritage Center, St. Matthew's Cathedral, Laramie Women's Club, and the University of Wyoming School of Law. We'll hold a reception on July 28, which is a Sunday, at 2:00 p.m. in the Alice Hardy Stevens Center. There will be brief remarks, light refreshments, and about 40 to 50 descendants of the Downeys will come to Laramie to celebrate on that day. And finally, I would mention that they are also providing a plaque for the county, marking 1871, when Stephen Downey dedicated the first Albany County Courthouse, and 1831, when his son dedicated the current Albany County Courthouse. And that'll be a 12-by-18 brass plaque, which will be placed inside the entrance to the new north entrance of the Albany County Courthouse. So, thank you very much. We look forward to having a good celebration on the 2nd, and invitations will be forthcoming.
Thank you. And if you would come forward, I'll present you with this. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Would you like to?
Sure, why not? Give some applause.
I think it was right there.
Wait till we all gather around, okay? Ready?
You got it, bro.
There we go.
Ready?
Yes.
Great, thanks again.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Say, slid your chair. It's just, you're right there in the camera angle.
City Manager, are there any announcements?
Mayor and Council, no announcements this evening, thank you.
Okay. Now, the next question is, are there any disclosures by city council members regarding any item on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll next go to the approval of the consent agenda, Vice Mayor Pat Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific item on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. So, that vote is unanimous to adopt the consent agenda. We now move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 10, and I've asked Brian Schuster to introduce this.
Thank you. The title of this resolution is 2019-21 Designating Recreation Project Request Priorities to the Albany County Rec Board for Funding Consideration in Fiscal Year 2020. I move that the Council approve Resolution 2019-21 Designating Recreation Project Request Priorities to the Albany County Rec Board for Funding Consideration in Fiscal Year 2020, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Jane Pierce. Todd Fieser.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Todd Fieser, Assistant City Manager. This is the annual allocation of the Albany County Rec Mill that's coming to you today. We start this process in October the year previous, and it starts with three advertisements in the boomerang, plus a direct email to the recipients over the last four years that the process has started. My department is responsible for collecting the applications and then having them vetted through the Park Street and Rec Advisory Board. That occurred this year on January 9th and 10th. On the 9th, they heard 27 proposals for funding, and on the 10th, they developed a priority listing of those proposals, and that's what you have before you today. Originally, there were 27 proposals totaling about $680,000. Since the final decision on the 10th, two proposals were pulled. The University of Wyoming pulled one, just due to the fact that they probably wouldn't make funding at the ranking that they received and need to use that money elsewhere for other projects. And then I chose to pull the climbing wall because of potential sixpenny impact at the recreation center coming up. And what you have before you is 25 proposals that are totaling $550,294. If we base it on previous year's outcome, we should see us funded through level, through number 20 on the priority list, which is the program support, pool, lap, lanes, and lane reels for the City Recreation Division. Anything below that may get funded, depending on the wishes of the Rec Mill Board themselves. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from anyone on the Council? Okay, any questions regarding this Rec Mill list of priorities from anyone in the audience? Any comments from the city council? Okay, could we, oh, yes.
So, please thank the folks who sit on that board, because it's a lot of hard work listening to all of that, and we truly appreciate all their efforts.
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Pierce, I will say that the Park Street and Rec Advisory Board, since I've been here, this is the single most important thing to them that they do to support recreation in this community, and they all take it very serious, and I'll pass that along.
Thank you. Yes, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the other thing we should add is that the funding that comes out of the Rec Mill is often some of the most reliable and important source of revenue for funding a huge number of activities that we may not even know are funded through that process, and provides a lot of quality recreation opportunities that otherwise we wouldn't be able to have. That's worth acknowledging. It's taxpayer money put towards a good use. Thank you.
Any other comments, Council? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fieser. Could we have roll call?
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so that resolution passes unanimously. The next resolution we have is number 11. I'd ask Brian Harrington to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor. The title of this is Resolution 2019-24 Appointing One Council Member as Council Liaison to the Albany County Recreation Board. I move to approve Resolution 2019-24 Appointing Council Member Vice Mayor Pat Gabriel to serve as the Council Liaison for the Albany County Recreation Board, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Pierce. Any discussion in Council? Any questions or discussion from the audience? Okay, back to Council, anything about this before we go to the vote? Let's go to the vote.
McKinney?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
So, that resolution also passes unanimously. We'll now go to the number 12, which is to be introduced by Jane Pierce.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-23 Adopting Policy Goals and Objectives for the City of Laramie, Wyoming for 2019, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Harrington. Okay, any questions or discussions from the Council? Did we, maybe you could ask staff, and I haven't seen this in here, did we add anything to the goals on this, this week? Ask the City Manager.
Mayor and Council, the goals reflect the goals you discussed at your retreat in late January. Staff have refined some language in ways that we don't believe to be substantive or change the intent or nature of your goals. And so, you see some refined language. If anything has altered the nature or intent, you know, please change as you see fit. What I would offer for you is, we did draft two resolutions for your consideration. Resolution A does include the potential residential rental inspection program in your next item. And you'll recall from last week during the agenda review meeting, I had noted that that is a fairly substantive public policy goal, and so our recommendation would be, if you're going to work on that this year, that you memorialize that in your goal resolution, just so we're keeping kind of accurate track of the work and the objectives for the year. That is, again, Resolution A, so you can choose to amend by substitution to include Resolution A in lieu of the standard resolution that you, that includes just what was discussed at the retreat.
Okay, is that clear to the Council? Yes.
Mayor, if we could have a clarification to the motion as to whether it's Resolution A or Resolution B that we are approving?
Okay, and the maker of the motion, well, let's, let's, let's.
I just have a comment.
Let's go to the maker of the motion, first of all. Jane, do you want to clarify whether that's Resolution A or Resolution B?
I would like that to be Resolution 23A.
23A, which excludes?
Includes.
Includes, okay. All right.
My second, which, yeah.
Second agrees, okay. Now, any, any other questions or discussions regarding these policies and goals? From the Council, Jessica.
Yeah, I guess I just would like to make a comment that we all went to the Council Retreat in January, and I think we all approached it with some goals that we'd like to achieve, and this was something that was not on our list. And while I appreciate that this is a big goal, and, you know, putting it on our Council goals for the year is important, it's not something we decided at the Council Retreat, and we're just putting this through at the 11th hour, and I think you can see here this affects a lot of people. You know, so I guess I have an issue with adopting a policy goal at the 11th hour.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the Council? City Manager Jordan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I apologize, I neglected to mention this in the overview, and that is, as I sit here this evening, I see that there is a typo in the amendment, or excuse me, in the resolution, and I would ask for a friendly amendment to Section 2 to strike 2018. These goals clearly are for 2019, not for 2018.
Okay, can that just be a Scribner's error?
I am happy to re-Scribner this for you, yes.
Let's do it that way. I don't think it needs to be otherwise. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also received communication from the City Manager's office via email. I remember the Council received it, I don't know if it was two weeks ago, asking for the approval of the inclusion of this policy goal, and I know some of us responded. I know I certainly did. So, I'd objected to the characterization of it as an 11th hour addition. I think there's been ample time to provide feedback on whether or not we wanted to include it as a policy goal or not. I certainly do.
Okay.
I think the language may need some changing in the milestone number four section, but I support it. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion, comments, questions? Jessica?
I guess to that end, you know, I know what email you're talking about a couple weeks ago, and I don't think there was a consensus one way or the other, because not everybody chimed in, and as we learned in our warm training last week, we really shouldn't be voting on anything via email. That'd be my response to that.
Okay, thank you. Any other, anyone else? Jane?
So, I think in spirit, whether we responded to email or not, or the fact that this is an economic development issue, and the fact that we are all for economic development, I think it fits just fine.
Okay. Further discussion? Charles?
I had to say it, but I wasn't there, so I don't know what the discussion was. My opinion is, is I think it should be removed.
Okay. All right, Brian?
I've looked at both sections, and I can just say that if we go with B, it is removed. If we go with A, it is there. So, it'll be the choice of Council whether to support Amendment A or support Amendment B. It is still our choice. So, which way it goes is still in the hands of Council.
Okay. Could I ask our City Attorney a question? Should this go forward to vote, and it's defeated, do we then go to vote on the same resolution as B, or do we, how do we, how do we, how would we, would we have to?
Yeah, I think you would go on to the other resolution.
Go to the next resolution, okay.
A motion and second.
Okay. So, the maker of the motion then would go to Resolution using B, so you understand that, Jane?
Got it.
Okay. Any other discussion from the Council regarding Resolution before us, which is the Resolution A?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
For my second time, and so very briefly. If members of the Council have a reservation about including this, because it was discussed in electronic communication through city staff and between the Council, the actual vote on whether or not it's included, the vote that we take that will be in the public record, takes place right here tonight in public. The electronic communication was whether or not we wanted it to be included, so the Council could discuss it right now. That would be the last thing I'd add. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Audience, anything that you want to include in your comments regarding this item which is before us, this resolution, which is our goals for this year? Okay, seeing none, I'll come back to Council one more time before we go to the vote. Anything else anyone wants to say?
And this is on 23A.
23A, yes. Resolution 2019-23A. Okay, roll call.
Schuster?
No.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Stalder?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Shumway?
No.
So, that, that is defeated by, well, go ahead, City Clerk.
So, that's four yeses and five nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so that item is defeated, so now we go back to the motion maker. Jane Pierce, would you please make the motion on this resolution again with, using B?
All right, I move to approve Resolution 23B.
Could you read?
Can you?
Yeah.
I can't see it there. Let's see, I move to approve Resolution 2019-23B, adopting policy goals and objectives for the City of Laramie, Wyoming for 2019, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Gabriel. Okay, now we're going to have discussion on this. Before I do that, I want to make an announcement again. There is overflow seating downstairs in the break room. There's tele, this meeting's being televised, and so those of you that want to have a place to sit, you're certainly welcome to go there. There are elevators will take you there, and then we'll be on to the item that I think almost all of you are here for, which is the next item that's coming up. So, let's go back to discussions regarding the Council goals that we have, which is covered here in Resolution B, 23B. Any discussions from anyone on the Council? Further discussion? Any, any comments or questions on this, regarding this from the audience? Back to the Council, anything? Okay, let's vote on this resolution.
McKinney?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so that resolution now passes unanimously. Okay, we will now then go to item number 13. Paul Weaver, would you introduce this resolution to the Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2019-22 Providing Direction to Staff with Respect to the Possible Implementation of Rental Housing Standards and an Inspection Program to Ensure Safety and Health of Inhabitants Living Within Residential Rental Properties, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
I think we just need to get ahead of this right now, and I want to thank the members of the public for coming tonight. I think we can be proud of the fact that we have engaged citizens in Laramie, and that's something that should be applauded. So, I want to use my time here very quickly as an opportunity for a perception check, Mr. Mayor. I think there are some fair questions that we've received from many people about the timing of this resolution and its true purpose. What is clear, from my view, is that we needed, as the Council, to provide a larger amount of time for all the stakeholders to provide input. The resolution as it currently reads has been interpreted to be a policy that the Council was going to debate and pass or defeat tonight, that would immediately create a series of regulations that'd be implemented. But if you look at the motion as it stands, it's to begin that process. Originally, the intention of the resolution, as it reads at the bottom, was to then set up a series of public hearings on the matter. So, I think we need to make that clear, that it wouldn't have been tonight, or won't be tonight, the immediate creation of any type of rental standards that would apply overnight. That's just not a process that this city council would initiate. And I think there are elements of the resolution that communicate that, but it's easy to understand how people might not interpret it that way. So, I would like to apologize for any confusion on that point. It's just, it's not correct. But I also will be clear that I don't apologize for the Council bringing the issue forward to examine. I think it's a very important issue, and I think it's something that we will need to take a look at. I don't think it's something we can ignore. Some people would share with you that it's been ignored for a long time. My intention was to make amendments on this resolution tonight, removing the specific policies outlined in Section 4, because they were, I think, somewhat in conflict with other elements of the resolution, asking the staff to develop a program, and then take a look at implementing it. But those are some very specific items, and I think it's reasonable to have removed those. But at this point, I think we can take a different approach altogether. After we provide an ample opportunity for public comment, my intention will be to make a motion to postpone this matter, and direct the staff to create a community task force comprised of all stakeholders to be represented in equitable way, to help us develop this policy as we move forward. But at this point, I think we need to hear from the gathered members of the public, Mr. Mayor, before we go any further. Thank you.
Okay. So, as you have gathered, our intent is to hear from the public, and then hopefully, after that, then there will be a motion to, to have a resolution that comes forward to form a task force, so that we can identify all the issues that would be important for all of us to consider. So, at this point, with, I will ask if there's any, briefly from the Council, anything you want to mention before we go to the audience for their input, their comments that they have prepared to bring to us tonight? Anybody? Okay. Now, we're, yes, City Clerk?
Mayor, just for the record, I just wanted to note that you have received all the public comments that have been received up until the start of the year.
Which is considerable.
Yes.
Considerable. These, we have the written, the ones that have been sent to us by email. Many of us have had other conversations on telephone, in person, and we certainly recognize the interest, and we appreciate that that's coming forward. Now, again, to clarify- These, we have the written, the ones that have been sent to us by email. Many of us have had other conversations, uh, on telephone, in person. And, uh, we certainly, uh, recognize the interest and we appreciate that that's coming forward now. Again, to clarify, the decisions are not gonna be made tonight. What we're, what we're attempting to do is to let the voice be heard from the community, from the stakeholders, from anyone that's interested in this, uh, item that we have before us. And then there will be another resolution, uh, and we'll, we'll set a date, a date specific for that, not too far down the road, where we will come back and then talk about, you know, the possibilities of having that group bring all the, that discussion to us. So let's begin with the public comments on this, on this item. Yes, come forward now. Yes, questions?
Jane has a question.
So be sure to remind the folks to sign in.
There is a place for you to sign. We want to have your name so that we can, you know, keep a record of that on your comments also.
Mayor, my name is Jeff Van Fleet. I'm a local attorney. Uh, my wife and daughter are local real estate agents and property managers in the community. I would encourage the council not to waste their time with this. It's an undue burden on the people in this community who are trying to make this community better. Um, we have a room full of property owners here who have bought homes, moved up, and then rented out their homes so the students that come to our community have a place to live. They don't need additional government interference and licensing. And the communities, I did a quick survey across the nation where states and cities have acted similar sort of things. And the main complaint from folks is that is an undue burden with no benefit to your community. These, this is your community that you serve. There is no benefit to them. The Wyoming State Legislature, Legislature has already passed a Residential Rental Property Act, and in that, section 1211206, has renters remedies. They are very specific. I'm an attorney, I do evictions, I also defend evictions. I do it all the time. I have a hearing tomorrow in Cheyenne, and I, I'll have them ongoing. The rules are already in place for landlords to be protected and for renters to be protected. And looking at section four, I think some of those suggestions for where the policy might go are an overreach, and they're not clear, thus the reaction you've got from the community today. And I would encourage the council, instead of wasting their time with something that's already a part of state law, that already works very well. I'm in court all the time dealing with landlord tenant issues. There are remedies for both sides already in place. The state already has solved this problem. There's not a need for you all to waste a single moment of time or a single penny of the taxpayers' dollars in the city to address the problem that doesn't exist. So I would encourage you guys not to form a task force, just to turn down the suggestion altogether. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate your enthusiasm. We, we ask you to, not applaud or whatever you do, but I, I appreciate that anyway. Also, it's gonna be important tonight for us to hear anyone that wants to speak to us, and we want to do that. You've, you'll, you'll be able to hear comments from people. Uh, repetition will just take us more time. So if you have something new, or something that you want to bring before the council, or maybe emphasize in a different way a point, be sure to come forward and do that. Now, I see people are signing the list here. Who is the next person that wanted to come forward to speak to the council?
Joe.
Yes.
I'm not sure how to say your last name, my apologies. Thank you.
Hey, thank you all for taking my comments in advance.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Wojciechowski, I am, I'm a property owner here in Laramie. And, um, you know, I figure there's three reasons for considering rental permits and inspections. Um, one is for the health and safety of the county. Two is a new stream of income for the city. And three, in, it enacts some type of law that protects University of Wyoming housing by imposing regulations on landlords but exempts the university properties and interests. Um, the second one with the new stream of revenue, I just want you to let you know that Erie, Pennsylvania has already lost over $300,000 on their rental inspection program. And, um, the third one about the University of Wyoming, seems like if you're exempting one entity over the others, it could be construed as discrimination. So Wyoming Constitution talks about security against search and seizure, which says, you know, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated. You know, man, mandatory rental inspections violate the Fourth Amendment. A short intrusion can reveal very personal information about one's religious beliefs, political beliefs, emotional or mental state, hobbies, sexual orientation, and/or genity, gender identity. For inspection, the city of Laramie is going to have to require permission from each tenant that occupies a residence. If any tenant refuses to comply, the city may instead fine the landlord on a daily basis until they can coerce the tenants to allow the inspection. The city would essentially fine the landlords for refusing to violate the tenant's privacy. So if that's true, and the tenant refuses, then I guess it's in the landlord's right to evict the tenants based on non-compliance of the law. Cities have backed away from policies requiring full inspections because of the consequences of the violation of the Fourth Amendment. Full rental inspections have been successfully challenged in Red Wing, Minnesota, Pottstown, Pennsylvania, Chesterfield County, Virginia, Elizabeth, Pennsylvania, Golden Valley, Minnesota, San Luis Obispo, California, Garland, Texas, Highland, California, Park Forest, Illinois, and is presently being challenged in Seattle, Washington. The Institute for Justice and the ACLU have been involved in these scenarios. So, you know, I'm not here to scare you in this, but I, I think it's, it's right to only give you some alternatives, look at what you can do, because a large number of renters in Laramie are students from the University of Wyoming. The University Student Legal Services offers students comprehensive tentative, tenant and landlord information and resources. The University of Wyoming should make this offering more apparent to students. The University of Wyoming should also offer this resource to all potential renters in the city of Laramie. Tenants can ask for an inspection if they are concerned about a property. In addition, inspections can avoid infringing renters' privacy by conducting them only when a property is vacant. The city of Laramie could also incentivize landlords and landladies by offering a seal of approval or quality standards. These could then be used in marketing to promote better properties. These options would both protect the health and safety of the renters without sacrificing civil liberties. I recommend you consider the information I present to you. I also suggest that each one of you, including the city attorney, to submit all of your properties in Laramie, whether they're rentals or not, whether your landlords are not, and do a full inspection criteria on the same thing you require every landlord property owner to submit to. Let them go through all the rooms in your house, your bedroom, your kid's room, your garage, your basement, your attic, and your closets, and have them record everything that's in violation. Will these be public records for everyone to see? Maybe you'll get a feeling of what's right and what's wrong. Now, Laramie's a great city, and, and I don't want to see Laramie go into a budget deficit. And I'm sure your city council will make the right decisions without being unjust. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, who's next on the list? I think we're all staying within the five-minute limit. We'll, uh, ask you to condense your comments if you need to, to stay within a five-minute limits for, for public comments.
Amanda Pittman.
Okay, Amanda Pittman.
Hi. Hi, um, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thank you for listening to my comments. So I've been a Laramie resident for about 10 years. I started renting here in Laramie about 10 years ago. And it actually came up recently that some of the same problems that I saw 10 years ago when I was renting are still happening with the same landlord today. So I am really concerned about renters' rights, and I generally am in favor of a resolution to look into the problem and to look into how we can protect renters' rights. It will need to be considered carefully. Civil liberties, of course, will need to be taken care of. But, you know, I did just buy a house and it was inspected, and since banks are protected when they, um, when they finance a mortgage, I think renters should also be protected as well. Renters in the city, um, have a wide variety of experiences. Some landlords are fantastic, um, some landlords are terrible. Um, some landlord, some landlords make and break promises, some landlords, uh, charge you exorbitant fees and interest and wait for years to come after you. These things are predatory. And frankly, um, young folks, young families, and poorer individuals are gonna be the people that are renting as opposed to buying, and they're the ones that are gonna have less power in these situations. And they don't always have legal redress. They don't always have the knowledge to provide proof that the landlord promised that they were gonna fix this window, or what, what have you. They don't always have the ability to get, to get an attorney and go to small claims court. So when you have these power differentials, you really, really need to have some protection for these folks. And when you're looking at small families, you really need to have protection for those kids. If you're having like a lot of older homes, as we do have in Laramie, you have some serious issues that can be mediated fairly easily, but may not be. A couple of concerns that I do have, um, and they may be totally eliminated, um, by doing the task force instead of this resolution as written. But I am concerned with the exemption of commercial properties as written, um, because one of the places that I did live, um, probably about eight years ago, um, I looked it up on the assessor's website, and it is considered a commercial property, um, and therefore would be exempt. It has about nine units, and I, I do think that it should be counted in, in this. And, um, I, I do think that a lot of research does need to be done. But I think this is long overdue and necessary. And even though I am now a homeowner, and who knows, someday might be a landlord myself, and even though I do know some really great landlords, I do think that this should be something that we should explore. Uh, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Brett Glass.
Good evening, Mayor Shumway, members of council. Uh, my name's Brett Glass, uh, post office box 1693 here in Laramie. Here before you this evening, well, for the same reason everyone else is sure to be before you, I read the, uh, resolution and I was a little bit alarmed by the prescriptive nature of it. It wasn't just a resolution that said, "Let's explore this." It was one that actually prescribed things that council, that, uh, that city staff was to, was to draft regulations about, if you take, take a look at the, uh, the list at the bottom. And I was very concerned about this because it was being foisted on us all of a sudden. It wasn't just going from zero to 60, it was going from zero to 1,000. And that really did alarm me and my wife. We work very hard on our rentals. At 10:30 last night, as a matter of fact, I was coming back from Cheyenne where I went to see a movie that wasn't playing in Laramie. I needed to go to Cheyenne to see it. I was tired, we'd just driven over the hill in the snow, and I got a call as I came over from a, you know, from a tenant who was, uh, who was saying that it seemed a little cold. So I went to, to, uh, one of our rental, our family's rental properties and discovered that the furnace wasn't firing. Well, we couldn't get, we couldn't get a contractor to fix that. I personally, even though I was dead tired, became a furnace repairman, took the furnace apart, replaced the thermocouple, and got it running so that the tenants had heat. That's the kind of thing we do for our tenants in Laramie, and, uh, you know, it's one of the reasons why we got into the business, because we wanted to be able to provide better quality rentals. Please do not penalize us for doing this by suddenly forcing this regulation on us because the first people who are going to leave the market are not gonna be the bad actors, they're gonna be people like us who are just so frustrated by the additional burden. The, uh, reg, the resolution starts by mentioning health and safety concerns. Now, are we suddenly seeing a rash of people whose health has been threatened by problems in rentals? Are we, are we seeing a significant number of injuries of, of any kind? As far as I know, we haven't seen any change in this, we haven't, we don't have a, a large number of them. I think that before we, before anyone votes in favor of this, you know, you should, you should point to concrete examples of a problem that needs to be solved, because otherwise we're addressing, you know, we've got, uh, we've got a solution in search of a problem. Now, and also, we should be very concerned about the cost of implementing that long list at the bottom of the resolution. Because I don't think that the city frankly can, can afford to pursue this sort of thing, especially with the state, with the, with the cuts in funding that we're getting from the state. Another speaker has already addressed the forced and Fourth Amendment concerns of having inspections which are an intrusion upon tenants as well as the landlord. And, uh, I'm really concerned that funding such a program is going to, is going to result in essentially what amounts to a rental tax. Other communities have attempted to impose, um, registration fees, and those wind up being reflected in the rents. And so you're actually hurting the tenants, not helping them unless there is a real problem to be solved here. You're gonna need a large staff. Fifty-five percent of all of the dwellings in Laramie are rentals. That's a huge number. You'll need two or three inspectors, and you'll need a couple of support personnel to take care of them. Who's gonna pay all of those salaries? Ultimately, it's gonna be taxpayers, or it's going to wind up being the renters themselves. The, uh, regulations mentioned in the resolution, um, the, the International Property Management Code, that's a hundred-page book right there. And it refers to another book which has about, which has about 900 pages. And people are gonna have to buy copies of all of these codes, and there are a zillion minutie, minutia in there that, that people are gonna have to conform to. This is a big and complicated and expensive process, and unless there is a real benefit to be gained for the, you know, for the tenants, um, again, more than we can get just from making sure they understand what they can do under state law, I, I don't think it's a good idea to go ahead and do it. We have here, I, I have here a copy of a book which is distributed by ASUW at the University of Wyoming, which is called Laramie Living. It's part advertising and it's part rental guide, and it's also a very good guide to tenants' rights. One thing which the uni, which I--
Mr. Glass, right, five minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, okay, I will, I will--
Wrap it up.
I am, I am wrapping up. I think that perhaps instead of pursuing this, one thing that we could do is we could pursue a program with the university to get something like this into more people's hands, maybe have an ombudsman or direct people to counseling at the law school by, by law students, which they already have. We can do things to help tenants without getting involved in this huge potential can of worms. And so I'd like to ask that the council vote down the resolution and instead consider proposal to do that instead. I won't take any more of your time because I know there are a lot of people waiting to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Walt Hammond Tree.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for allowing us to, to speak. I very much appreciate the, the time. I do want to say right off the top, um, I may, um, actually echo some of Mr. Glass's comments, but he wouldn't share his notes before he came up, so. I, I, I believe that we all here tonight have the best interest of Laramie in mind. I believe it. I believe that about the council, that's why you ran, and that's why you were elected, and that's why most of us are here, whether we harbor one opinion or another. And I do applaud Councilman Weaver's decision after the, the outpouring of, um, stuff that you received from, from the public, to, uh, to understand that there may have been some misinterpretation, and there was definitely disagreement concerning this resolution tonight, and giving, uh, the opportunity to postpone the vote on the resolution and to allow the public to voice their opinions. And I do understand that you are going to receive, um, opinions tonight that will say that you need to, um, just go ahead and tank this all together and we'll move on. I suspect that isn't going to happen. And so what I would like to do with my remaining four minutes, if you're timing me, Mr. Mayor, uh, is, is I would like to say that as you go back and take a look at this resolution and accumulate all of our opinions, um, I would like to offer some perspective on what I feel would be, uh, things that would help us as a community. One of the things that I would recommend, obviously, is, is an ad hoc committee of, uh, of community stakeholders, and that would be a community, uh, involving the tenants, involving the owners, involving property managers, involving, uh, business folks, involving the university even, although, did I say that out loud? did I say that out loud? Okay. Um, but involving a group of people in our community that can assist the city, that can assist the city attorney or the city management in coming up with identifying what kind of problems we have in our rental, uh, capacities today, be that tenant, uh, uh, problems or we have physical problems with our, with our buildings. And then identifying viable solutions that we might have. And some of these solutions may not be a rental licensing program that is funded and managed by the city. We might find as a result of this task study that we actually can do something in the private sector that may work as well. Or we may find out that we're going to start on one plane and see how we do for a year or two and we may have to step that up. All of these things I think are, are things to consider. Um, of course, we also have, um, the consideration of whatever we decide as a solution to be, uh, of the impact that we might have on the city, good or bad. Is, is it going to increase liability to our city? Is it going to violate constitutionality? Is it going to be so obviously expensive that we just can't afford to keep it up? These are, these are things that I, I hope will come out of that, uh, discussion that we have. Um, in terms of, uh, the exclusions on section four, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think that although that was probably well intended when the resolution was drafted, um, obviously those are, are things, whether we exclude or we don't exclude, whether we decide who's in or who's out, that will come as a result of our committees or our people getting together, coming to terms with what we need to do, establishing a solution and then making a recommendation to you on how we should best move forward. Um, I do appreciate the fact that this has been postponed. I do believe that we have one shot here, uh, to make this happen. And I believe that the way that you can best make this successful on, in, in any capacity is with community involvement and listening to, to folks and identifying problems, identifying solutions with everybody's assistance. I think if you do it in that manner, then at the end of the day, you're going to be much more successful. I think we have a lot of concerns alleviated and I feel like, um, we will move to take care of some problems. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond Tree. There has not been a postponement yet. There, there's the indication from Councilman Weaver that there will be a postponement, uh, after we hear from the public. So that's, that's where we are right now.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I was just wondering if maybe we could bring this, uh, to a vote because I sense, and all the email that I received, that there's, there's probably not a whole lot of, uh, people on the council in favor of this and maybe we can send a lot of these people home. My only consider, uh, my concern would be if it doesn't pass, that if we vote this down, then we can continue hearing the public. But, uh, I sense that, um, there's not a whole lot of support on council for this, considering that last vote.
Yeah, we, uh, let, let, let me, let me just mention this. We have committed ourselves to hearing from the public and there is a, a great deal of public interest here. I appreciate your, uh, thought that we could just go to a vote and see where we are, but I, for me personally, I want to hear from the public and hear all of their comments before I, uh, vote on this very, very important item. So, uh, let me, let me just do this at my prerogative. I'm going to continue to hear from, uh, the public and then I will consider that proposal later on, but let's just continue to hear from those that have come to talk to us this evening. City clerk.
About, about didn't make it up. Um, Mayor Shumway and, uh, council persons, glad to see you tonight. Uh, the main thing that I was concerned about, uh, has been addressed was that, uh, how will this be paid for? How much extra government cost will there be on more agency? It starts out small, balloons in five to 10 years. Um, I raised my family here in Laramie. It's been a great place to live. It's been an affordable place to live up to this point, to the last, uh, little bit. My property tax on my house has gone way up and the water has gone up, what, four to five times as much?
Ten times.
Yeah. It's cheaper in Arizona and many places. So, um, I'd like to encourage the council to avoid spending more of our money, uh, like that. Um, I think that, um, the cost will be pa, uh, the pass will be passed on to the landlords. Landlords will then pass it on to the tenants, uh, and then it'll start to hurt the very people that we wanted to help in the first place. Um, with that said, I'm going to go to something else. Um, I work for UPS, almost going on twenty-nine years now. I've delivered packages to these people for twenty-nine years in this town. Various apartments, I've seen everything. I've seen the dungeons, I've seen the ones where, you know, obviously they have wealthy parents and I've, I've seen it all. And sometime, and, and kind of my experience in, in this is sometimes I wonder why some of these kids live in a place like that. And it's because they're in the market for it. They can't afford anything else and some of them, if they, even if they want, you know, wanted to, they, 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 they're looking for some of that and, and for that type of, uh, place to live. And I think it's deplorable, I, you know, landlords that they should, I feel like they should fix it up and stuff like that, but if there's a market for it, there's a market for it. Who are we to say? But if you fix your place up, you can charge more rent. I think that's what they should do, but can we force them to do that? Uh, certainly I think, uh, you know, an unsafe place, that's, that's something different. Um, uh, you know, and if it is a bad place, don't rent it. There's a lot of apartments vacancies in this town every year, all year long. And they range from the dungeons on up to the expensive ones. There's vacancies. And if you don't like living where you are, there's plenty of other options. Um, anyway, so like I said, go back to first thing, I'm, I'm concerned about the cost of it and bureaucracy.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Mayor Shumway and, uh, respected councilmen. I'll try not to shake too bad. Um, I have never done anything like this before.
You're doing fine.
I'm twenty-seven years old. I've lived in this town since I first came here for my first undergrad in two thousand and ten, eight years ago, almost. I guess we're approaching nine years now. Um, and the reason I'm standing here, um, actually as a law student now, is that, um, the, the inspiration for going into the law was, was my rental experience. I mean, there were, there were other, other reasons as well. But I want to acknowledge first and foremost that it's probably not the majority of landowners around here that are the issue. I think that it, it certainly seems like there's a, a select few of seemingly untouchable landlords who are able to get away with these dungeons, with these, um, these, these places that, that no sensible person would agree to rent. And that's part of the problem. College students aren't sensible people. So, and it's not, it's not a slam on college students, but just the recognition that, I mean, even the human brain doesn't fully develop until the age of twenty-five. They, they come here and we, I came here as a child and I didn't know any better. And I, I agree with many of the comments actually, that part of the problem is, is the informational problem. Students don't know their rights. Students don't know, um, what they should agree to and what they should not agree to. Um, and then on, on, on the backend of these things, it's almost like there's, there's a complete, um, void as far as knowledge of what you can actually do to, to get recompense or to get even just a security deposit back or, uh, just, just a recognition that, that what you had to put up with was not okay. Um, and I think, uh, and, and some of the limitations are that the student legal services, um, attorney on campus is unable to, uh, give any kind of legal information on cases involving students, um, together. They, they consider it a conflict of interest. And then the student legal services clinic at the law school, who I, who I adore, and they are just superheroes in my opinion, um, they are, are completely overwhelmed with just the sheer volume of, of lower income type, uh, requests and, and needs that come before them. And so ultimately what I, what I want to suggest is, is not that we, we just do a blanket condemnation of all property owners around here, but, but that we start considering what we can do for those that are causing the problems and what we can do to, to inform students so that they know how to make a smart decision about what they, what they should live with and what they're going to pay. And, uh, a, and, and part of that is, is that, I mean, we, we come as children and the, the bargaining power between an eighteen-year-old and a, and a sixty-year-old who's been renting for, uh, out to people for thirty years. I mean, of course they're going to have different understanding of the law and, and one of them is going to be much more experienced in the business. And, uh, I, I, I propose that, that we at least consider and, and, and try to find a way to figure out how we can address the problems where they are and not necessarily just putting a, a, a blanket, um, resolution to affect every property owner in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure you'll be a great lawyer. Good job.
Alex Mulhall.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you for hearing from us today. Uh, I'm Alex Mulhall and currently I'm serving as the ASUW student president, president, um, for the University of Wyoming. And so we thought that we had an obligation to be here to share with you all what we've heard from students and to urge you all to consider something that this resolution would propose as it's very important to students, it's very important to the renting culture that is so ingrained here in Laramie. And I think that this will be really important going forward for the future of Laramie. So, a couple of points I'd like to touch on and hopefully not repeat to many people. Um, but being a college student, um, not only is that difficult in itself, but when it comes to signing your first lease and moving out of the dorms, whatever it might be, um, there's a lot of factors that play into that. And quite frankly, college students are pretty susceptible, um, to a lot of different things when it comes to getting out into the world for the first time. Uh, as previously mentioned, we know that for a fact from our student legal services, um, the majority of opinions needed and complaints heard in that capacity is from students who are having a problem with their landlord and a problem with their property. Um, they signed into a lease that had an agreement that they didn't understand, but that wasn't completely fair. They cannot get, um, you know, damages fixed within their apartment, their furnace is out and they can't get their furnace fixed for an entire month simply from not hearing back from their landlord or real estate agency. These kind of problems are difficult for college students. One, because as a college student, as has previously been stated, you're not very wealthy, you're not very informed about the legal landscape. And so you see a place that looks okay, has a decent rate for rent and you sign on. But it might look great at first, later on you figure out that there's something in your lease, your landlord's not responsive, you can't get things taken care of, you end up with no leverage and no bargaining power when it comes to the landlord-tenant agreement as a college student. And simply, students notice this, students just take this into consideration, but students can't find a way out as it currently stands. There's the whole argument of if you don't want to live somewhere like that, don't. A lot of us don't have the ability to, to do that. It's not that there's a market for, you know, lower priced rentals. It's not that that's the market that people are looking for, it's that people are looking for something that they can afford and that they can live in. But your position on the economic scale shouldn't determine the brevity of your health or anything like that. You shouldn't, um, be confined to a basement with no egress window simply because you can only afford three hundred and fifty dollars a month. And I think that these are the things that this resolution would truly open up the city to consider. I think that truly, like it's been previously stated, a lot of landlords aren't below the standard. They're exceeding expectations, but that doesn't mean that there's not landlords out there who aren't upholding those standards. And I think that this would allow us to explore ways to create a standard in ordinance that would help people live up to that. It would help the market in Laramie have a better name for itself. It would help students be less susceptible to damages and loss of money, um, health problems. And also not only students, but outside. I would like to also mention that we did extend out to the community to come back, um, and let us know if they had any, any opinions on this, really aiming at students, but we heard more from non-students than we did from students. And so while I'm here representing students, I would urge you all to consider this because truly it's, uh, an issue for students and an issue for non-students. It's something that as a community, university and non, uh, university, we can come together and create something uniquely for Laramie, uniquely for a university town in a single land-grant institution community in, in, uh, in a state like that. Um, so I really urge you to consider this. Um, the amount of students who live here and keep this market alive in Laramie, we consider, uh, urge you to consider this. We urge you to look at the Facebook, to look at the Google reviews of these real estate, um, agents in this town. And we just urge you to listen to the community, listen to the people who are directly affected, being the tenants, being the college kids, or being the non-college kids. And so I thank you all for listening to us here today. I hope that we can push this forward and come to a conclusion that suits all members involved, landlords and tenants, but ultimately secures a better future for Laramie. So, thank you, council.
Thank you, President Mulhall. I understand you left, left an ASUW meeting to be with us tonight. Thank you.
Indeed, I did, so I will head back there now.
All right. Good job. Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, council members. Um, I sent you an email, I don't know if you had a chance to read it. If you didn't read it, I don't blame you, it was very long. But what I wanted to do was to hit the issue from a different angle, perhaps, um, more of an economic development angle, since that's one of the stated goals and milestones of the, of the new council. And before I go into that, um, for the sake of brevity, I'm going to read you the recommendations. And if I didn't know any better, I would say that one of you guys at least read it because it's verbatim what you mentioned as a change to the resolution. So the recommendation was, the recommended course of action is for the honorable council to vote no on this resolution and remain consistent and supportive of the, of the stated strategic level objectives for Laramie-centric economic development and affordable housing. However, the intent of the resolution must be preserved and issues highlighted therein should be remanded to a community task force or an ad hoc committee designed for maximum input by all stakeholders, together with the exercise of proper procedural public notices and comments involved in order to recommend to council potential courses of action. This recommendation is also one hundred percent consistent with that sixty thousand dollar study that was commissioned by the city about, um, housing issues in Laramie. What I wanted to talk to you guys about is what I see as an investor, and that's really my role here, is what I call a potential perfect storm brewing for the local market. And I'm always reminded of, uh, what I used to do and what my commanding officer always told me. And I ended up becoming a strategic level advisor to, um, four-star generals and I was deployed probably more than a decade in Afghanistan and Iraq. And he always said, tactical mistakes have strategic impact. Tactical mistakes have strategic impacts. Doesn't matter the intention, you have to really look at the totality of circumstances and what really the operating environment is providing you. And that's really situational awareness. That's where wisdom comes in. And really, at the end of the day, your wisdom is key to good governance and good policymaking. Having said that, I want you to remember this acronym, BEDS. B stands for bills. There are two bills that last week passed and I think they're going to have an impact on Laramie. Some of you are familiar with Senate File One-eleven and the House Bill Two-sixty-three. One is worse, one is a little bit better, is a compromise bill, both of them passed. What does that mean? There's going to be four-year colleges coming, you know, or four-year degrees being offered at community colleges, right? And on top of that, there's going to be a dilution of the Hathaway Scholarship. What does that mean? Recruitment for U-Dub is going to be increasingly harder. Okay? Now, one of them is better for University of Wyoming, the one that is being proposed by Representative Harshman. The other one is a little bit worse, but both of them are bad for Laramie. Okay? Because it's going to create an issue in terms of enrolling in-state students to come to the Laramie campus. So that's one storm brewing. Number two, enrollment. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the spring enrollment in two thousand and nineteen dropped by twenty-two percent for the freshman class alone. There were one thousand eight hundred and ninety-one freshmen last spring. This spring we have one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven. That's a drop of four hundred and fourteen students, twenty-two percent. On top of that, the transfer rate dropped by four point four percent. What does that mean? Next semester, a lot of these kids are coming out of the, you know, on-campus, on-campus housing. They are not going to be looking for, that's four hundred and fourteen students. So you're going to have higher vacancy rates off-campus. D, D stands for- D, D stands for dorms. There's a $300 million bill that just passed, I'm sure you guys are aware. We don't know the full impact of it, but we do know that it calls for 200 beds being built. That's pretty significant, right? And there's a phase-two that is kind of hidden in there that calls for a sophomore village inside of the university. That's a game changer. That's another year that students are going to be on campus, okay? Not looking for off-campus housing, and also the impact on their local businesses.
Mr. Basari?
Yes, sir.
It's been five minutes, but go ahead. I want to hear S, so go ahead.
S is unfortunately completely macro-level. Very quickly, if you guys have been in the market, in the mortgage market, in 2016, the effective interest rate by the Federal Reserve was .25%. That's in the industries called effectively zero. We've had a couple of chairman changes, Chairman Powell, very aggressive, nine consecutive Fed hikes, and now we're at 2.5%. That's a 1,000% increase, right? I'm not saying the mortgage rates have increased by 1,000%, but if you ask any lender that understands that, the mortgage rates have increased at least by 2.5% or more. What does that mean? People afford less house. The byproduct of that, investors are going to increase their rent just because of the rate of return issues, right? And at the same time, if this resolution goes through as is, and I totally understand there are issues that should be highlighted, and that's why the recommendation asked for a task force, I'm all for that. But, you've got to be very, very careful, careful because of the totality of circumstances of these economic-level issues that I discussed, it does have the makeup of a perfect storm for the local market. And what I ask you, if I can finish this, behind you probably have 1,000 years of accumulated experience. I mean, you got, you heard from Walt Hammond Tree, I know the Spiegelbergs are here, you have captains of the local industry here that have 1,000-plus years of experience. Please ask us to help you. I don't have that much experience in, as an investor, I've been around for 20 months in Laramie, okay? I have rehabbed a lot of properties, though. But, I defer to them, please ask us, and maybe we can guide you to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our country.
Derek Colling.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for hearing our comments. My name is Derek Colling, I'm an investor in town. I'm also a property manager, and I'm a Realtor as well. I have a lot of notes here that echo a lot of things that other people have said, but I'll try to skip those and cut to something new. Most of my business as a Realtor is working with investors in town. When my investors got word of this going through, they bailed out. And I can say that for every last one of them. What you've done already has affected our market and will continue to affect our market unless you kill this thing. I think that's what a lot of people in this room want, is not for a task force to be formed so that we can shove it to the wayside and deal with it some other day. We want this thing gone, we want this thing dead. Our market in Laramie is stable, it's safe, it's productive, and it's a good market right now. But, what you guys have done already, I'm sorry, I said guys, what you all have done already is affecting the market. I urge you not to create a task force in the future, I urge you to just abandon this and let the free market work as it's been working in Laramie for a long time. We have a group of very responsible landlords here that do the right thing for the right reasons. Sure, there's, there's some that are better than others, but to answer some of the ASUW comments, buyer beware, do your research in the market and find the right properties to rent and to live in. One of the attorney gentlemen said, "We're already governed by state statute, by federal statutes. Our system works, it's not broken." One last thing that's a little bit differently, different than some of what other people said. A large number of us are not impressed by members of the city council condoning slander on their personal Facebook page that's also lists them as a, as a city member, liking comments that slander businesses and individuals that are in this, that are in this industry. That's not acceptable. I know what it's like to be slandered by this community unfairly and unjustly, and we're not going to stand for it. I just leave you with this conclusion, our system's not broke right now, please don't break it.
Thank you, Mr. Colling.
Mike Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mike Sanchez, I am a graduate of the LCCC Construction Technology Program, and I am a current student at the UW for organizational leadership and sociology, and I am a prospective member of the task force that we are discussing. And I was going to come up and read some stuff, kind of responses to things that I've been hearing in throughout the community and some of the stuff that people have said throughout the night and whatnot. And really, if we're moving to continue the resolution, I would just encourage you guys to do that and focus on that. We have a severely misrepresented group here, and that is the renters. And we've heard from investors and property owners all night, and maybe two renters. And I just ask that you guys take more time to consider having our public hearings and get more stakeholders involved and get some more voices for some of the other people, renters included. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you.
Caleb, I don't know how to say your last name, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to make sure that the point was made, that it is not the renters versus the tenants. I am a rentor, and I agree, I have four kids and a wife, and we just moved back here. I'm lifelong, a lifelong Laramieite, if you will. And we moved back here, and we are renting so that we can, we rented so we could save enough for a down payment. The houses here, they need, some of them do need some work. But, we looked at the house, and we knew what we were getting into when we signed the house. And we can get out by statutes if we are disrespected, but it's done by a signature, we signed our name to the lease. There is plenty of already protections for renters, and I understand them. So, I guess I just wanted to make sure that you all didn't think that it is tenants versus renters, the people owning the land, that agree, you know, tenants agree that we should have this, and the renters and investors agree that we should, should not. I want to encourage you to hear what everyone had to say, and I would encourage you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heine. Ask the city clerk, how many more names do we have on the list?
We have two more currently.
Two more. I was going to take a break, but we'll, we'll listen to the last two, and if there's others that want to do this, we'll go take a break, and then we'll come back and wrap this up.
Bill Jordan.
Bill?
Good evening, council members, mayor. Boy, I got a couple dogs in this hunt. I've heard everything you're going to hear me say, I'm just reiterating the obvious. You know, before you, I read about this, and the first thing that got me upset was intrusion on the Fourth Amendment. You know, to implement R O I P, these residential inspections, you know, you're forfeiting your Fourth Amendment. That is just ludicrous. I mean, we can't do that. I mean, to sacrifice an amendment, a guaranteed constitutional right, in order to implement these inspections, you're going to have to surrender your right. Now, let's get to the economics. You know, I looked it up. Many communities, you go back eight, 10 years, they've been implementing these. You're looking at $500 a unit to process an inspection, plus repairs. You know, on a whole, this doesn't make sense. And I just want to voice my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bailey Harris.
Hi Bailey, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I am also from ASUW, I'm the Chief of Staff, and I just wanted to reiterate some of the points that Alex made earlier. But also, I implore you all, if you do take a break, to go back and read the landlord-tenant issue briefing that we sent you all yesterday. Our Director of Governmental Affairs sent you it. It outlines the biggest concerns we've heard through our office, and they concern withholding security deposit disproportionate charges, slower inadequate response to repair requests, unethical lease agreements, and physical conditions of housings. Most of those things are things we cannot look at the unit and know that that's going to be a problem when we sign the lease, and that is the main problem. Yes, we can look and see if there's black mold, obviously, we're not going to sign that lease, but what happens when black mold is created while we're living there, and then we can't get out of the lease because that's a, that's a damage to the unit that we didn't know about, and then we're, you know, liable for $1,000 or more. So, and that's actually an example, we have, that's a student, that's a, just a Laramie member testimony that we have that we'll be happy to pass on to you. We started a Facebook thread of this this morning, and have, I'm pretty sure, about 50 comments between the two posts that we made, and all of them have deplorable stories about landlords that have damaged renters in some way. And we totally concede that it's not every landlord that is the problem. We agree that it is a minority, but we think we should be taking steps to ensure that people can rent safely here and not be worried about being fallen, falling into the traps of the minority. And so, we ask you to continue to look at ways to solve these problems, whether that's through a task force, whether that's through passing this resolution, and taking out the provisions of Section 4, and letting someone who, or letting the task force decide what kind of ordinances need to be put in place to protect people. But, I implore you all to go and read, reread all the information we sent you, and then look through some of the other testimony. We have a lot more testimony printed out that we'll be happy to pass off to you during this break, and we're happy to continue this discussion, and we do think it's important for the future of Laramie and renting in the future in Laramie. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bailey. Is that everybody on the list?
We have one more on the list.
Some more. Okay, let's go ahead and hear from that person.
Michael Heine.
Michael? Brother? Are you a brother to Caleb?
Yes, Caleb is my younger brother. So, I'm a current landlord in Laramie, and I try extremely hard to keep my places in very good condition, because that is how I set myself apart from other landlords, and I charge for it. But, if I am, if I have to pay all these extra regulations and stuff, then it makes it so my bottom line is less, and I'm just going to sell and move away. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the plan is, we're going to take a break, come back, we'll hear from the city council, and then we'll go to a vote. If there's anybody else that wants to speak from the public, let us know right now, because this will probably be the last chance you get to do that. Yeah, please come forward, and then we'll take a break right after your, anybody else? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay.
Some more hands.
Is there more hands?
One in the back.
Yes, would you, okay, so we have two more, right? Okay. All right, great. Sean, you ready?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Cisneros. I am a property owner here in the community, and I take great pride in the properties that I own. There probably are some problems out there, but the way you guys were taking a look at approaching this is certainly not the correct way to do so. You know, we've heard a lot of negative things. There's a lot of social media, it's easy for people to get on social media, say negative things about anybody without any recourse whatsoever. One of the things that I can probably represent every person in this room that's a property owner is, is that we too still deal with the same problems that some of these tenants deal with. You know, I had a tenant just two months ago that cost me $12,000 worth of damage, okay? And so, there are expenses that we have to deal with, being property owners. If you guys are going to look further at this, you guys need to really explore a lot of options of how you're going to approach this, okay? First off, I don't think that the city of Laramie has the financial resources and/or the professional staff to be able to perform inspections adequately. You will need to have licensed people that are doing things properly. I'm sure the city will probably have to carry errors and emissions insurance to be able to provide, you know, protection from legality, from your inspector that you hired that said that there's a big problem here, and there's really, truly not. I deal with this sort of thing on a regular basis. I'm also a licensed contractor, and we get a lot of inspections that come in from inspectors that will indicate that there are problems inside of a home that truly are not what they deem that those problems are. So, in order for you guys to be able to truly have good inspections done, you're going to have to have licensed plumbers, licensed electricians, you're going to have to have somebody that is licensed for asbestos testing, you know, and the list goes on and on and on. And you guys start talking about egress windows and all of these other things, well, there's a lot of things that are grandfathered in, okay? You get back to anything built prior to 1980, and you're probably not going to find a house that has an adequate-sized egress window, okay? You can't condemn these property owners for purchasing these properties and making them be investments. It wasn't an issue at the time when they bought these things, and why should they have to spend $3,600 per egress window to come in and install these egress windows, okay? So, there's some responsibility on both parties. Property owners should take pride in what they've got, the renters should educate themselves and approach this from a little bit better perspective. One of the things that I do, and, and, you know, I think the key here is going to be education, and let's help these young people, because they're the ones that are affected probably the most. But, education, one of the things I do with my properties is I do a video walkthrough. Takes five minutes. I make sure that that prospective tenant is on the video, as well as myself. We do a walkthrough, and guess what? I've got a copy, I can send it to them. We walk through everything, open the cabinets, faucets, stove, refrigerator, look at the walls, windows, doesn't take long. And then everybody has record document as to what's happened inside of their property at the time that person took possession of the property. I think you guys need to take a look at this from a completely different perspective, and let's take a look at education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Lee, do we have one more? Yes.
Mr. Esslinger.
Mr. Esslinger, welcome.
My wife always says, and I promise I'll never say anything.
Here we are.
Thank you, Castle. I don't think I'll be the last person speaking, I bet you'll do one more of these. But, I just want to say, one of the things that you're looking at is going after, again, more the small investor than the larger investors. I happen to know every renter that I have their first name. I may not know their last name, but I also know that they have my phone number. I know that if they call, typically if it's a major problem, is furnace is going out or whatever, I'm there within, we'll say, an hour, or I have one of my handyman people get there within an hour. I don't want my pipes to freeze, that's common sense. The people that sometimes don't respond in a quick manner are the larger units that might not have a person on staff in the evening or whatever. But, you're looking at small investors picking up the tab for this one. And when I listen to the university, I'm not going to pick on them, but I happen to know that they have a lot of entitled kids that come from mom and dad's house. that come from mom and dad's house, and they expect it to be perfect. I'm like the other gentleman that just spoke. I walk them through it. I let them know that, hey, here's what we have. If there's ever a situation, let me know, because I would like my properties to stay in better shape. It's called, again, common sense, and I'm hoping that's what we will use when we make decisions on whether or not we just go after, to me, it seems, the small investor. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate comments from the public. We, I think, have received quite a bit of good information, a lot of good information. We appreciate your participation. We're gonna take a break now, and then when we come back, we'll ask the council to make comments, and then we'll go to the vote. So, we're gonna take a, let's just go five minutes. Five minute, we'll come back at five after eight. Into our City Council meeting. And again, welcome back. It's ten minutes after eight. And I would now like to ask Paul Weaver if he would like to make a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to make that motion. Do have a question for clarification for city staff. We have some alternative language here. Do we need to, the beginning of it is move to introduce resolution. Would we need to then introduce another number to that? Or what, what we're doing here is to just move to postpone with further direction? Do I understand that correctly?
City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you.
Yeah, Mayor, Council, the motion's on the floor. Anybody could move to postpone to a date certain with direction to staff.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make the motion. Then I would move to postpone consideration of Resolution 2019-22 to April 2nd, and direct staff to prepare a substitute resolution establishing an ad hoc community task force for consideration, and to further request affected stakeholder groups to submit letters of interest to the attention of the city manager to serve on the task force no later than March 30th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Jane Pierce. So now, we're gonna open discussion from the City Council to discuss the postponement. And keep, keep your comments to the postponement, if you would, please. City Clerk, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, what day did you say?
The second.
March?
March 30th.
30th.
March 30th, to imply, you said April.
April 2nd.
April 2nd.
Yep.
And we wanted to get...
April 2nd for the, for, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
For clarification purposes. That's the postponement of the resolution to April 2nd. Another piece of that, to create the ad hoc community task force with interested parties to submit letters to the city manager for inclusion on the task force no later than March 30th.
Okay. Jane, is that the way you understood it?
We have a point of clarification.
Okay, Erin, Doherty, go ahead.
Is this to replace the motion that's on the floor?
Mr. Weaver, is that your intent?
To replace it?
No, it's, it's a postponement of it, and then the, the resolution that would come forward, I think, would then be a substitute resolution. That's the way, that's the way the motion is worded, to create the, to create the community task force, the parameters around it, and then move forward.
That's my understanding. Does that answer your question, Councilor Doherty?
Well, it seems like we'd want to vote this down, and then bring up a, a different proposal. I don't see why we're keeping one on the table.
Okay, that is a possibility, I understand what you're saying. So, that is a possibility right now. That's not the motion on the floor. Counselor Weaver.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then to that point, I would ask the city staff if that poses any issue administratively, or if, actually, I may withdraw that question to the city staff and say, I think unless we, unless we use this mechanism now to postpone and direct council, we'll have to go through this entire process again. Counselor, uh, Doherty, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's the purpose of this motion.
And that's the purpose of the postponement.
And that's the purpose of the postponement.
Okay, is that clear to you? And is it clear to council? Okay. All right, any, any discussion regarding the postponement?
I'll just make a comment. I think, I think postponing this is a really good idea, obviously. Of the best of intentions, I guess. Postponement is probably our best choice, mostly because I think the observations regarding a lack of hearing from a lot of the students is really, really important to this issue, and I think we need to take some time to be better organized on this, and so, therefore, I think a postponement is a really good idea.
Thank you. Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to quickly thank everybody for joining us. This has certainly been the most people I have seen at a council meeting. But I, I just wanted to reaffirm a point and the purpose of this postponement. I think it is very important that you all may be the, the property owners that the city should be looking to for guidance. I think this postponement does just that, and I think the, the smart response to this postponement is, is not to run from what is clearly an issue, and instead to, to address a problem head-on. So, my hope is that by postponing and reconsidering this later, that you all will, will participate in our task force. We're ad hoc committee, or whatever we call it. That doesn't matter. So, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor Gabriel.
The first speaker at our public hearing tonight talked about the Residential Rental Property Act of 1999, House Bill 44, specifying the duties of landlords and tenants along with remedies for both parties. I think it says it all right there. I'm totally against this resolution. I'm totally against the postponement. We should do away with this, totally. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Again, I appreciate your enthusiasm, we appreciate...
I do too, by the way. Thank you.
Let me, let me just clarify what would happen. Should we, we're gonna vote on this postponement, and we're gonna be talking just specifically about the postponement before we go to vote. Should the postponement fail, we will go back to the resolution as it has been introduced, and then we'll have to vote on that. So, you know, just, the vote on the postponement failing does not mean we're finished. It means we go back, and then we have discussion again on the, on the resolution. Everyone understand that? Okay. Any, any further discussion on postponement? And because this is a new motion, we'll go back to the audience. Any comments from anyone in the audience on postponement? Pardon?
Just postpone.
Yeah, on postponement only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. City Clerk, if you would, your roll call on the postponement, please.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
No.
Stalder.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
No.
Shumway.
No.
That's three yeses and six nos, Your Honor.
So, that postponement motion fails, so we're now back to the resolution, and the discussion is open again from the City Council on, on the resolution. Paul Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I defer to Counselor Doherty due to her long-distance participation.
I heard Erin. Erin, would you go ahead, and then we'll come back to Mr. Weaver? Go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, I wanted to make an amendment that we strike Section Four motion proposal.
Mr. Mayor, that's the amendment I was about to make. With prepared language.
Okay, so I think you have a, a second. Is, are you ready to make a second to that motion?
No, I'm not, Mr. Mayor. I'm prepared to introduce the language for an amendment.
Okay. Uh, is that the way you want to introduce it? Counselor Doherty is just to strike four?
I'm just proposing that. If anybody wants to second it, I'll withdraw the motion.
Not hearing a second, then Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the resolution by striking the entirety of Section Four and replacing it with the following language to read. Section Four, to provide direction to city staff for both rental housing standards and inspection programs in accordance with federal and state law, and to recommend final policies to be established through ordinance by city council, and to further recommend that action of city council establishes an ad hoc community task force.
Second.
Did you get all of that, City Clerk? It'll, it'll be on the tape, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Any need for clarification on what's being proposed?
Can I have you repeat it one more time, just for public clarity?
Do you have it written?
Yes, the new, Section Four, to provide direction to city staff for both rental housing standards and inspection programs... To, uh, I'm sorry, to develop both rental housing standards and inspection programs in accordance with federal and state law, and to recommend final policies to be established through ordinance by city council, and to further establish an ad hoc community task force.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded, seconded by Jane Pierce, I believe. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion from council. Ryan Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to reiterate one last time before we, we vote on this, that just because if this is voted down, the problem does not go away. This is clearly a significant problem that, that has come to us. So, maybe we vote this down tonight. Maybe this becomes something that we back burner. That doesn't mean our housing standards have increased. And I'm not saying that you all, who are willing to participate this evening, are the problem, but the problem exists, and it is in a community at which you guys work. So, what I would say is that I think it's important that we all address this together, and, and the formation of a, of task force is the way to do that. That is how your voice is heard in this process, and that is how you keep this from being government overreach, if that is the concern. So, with that, I would just urge my fellow counselors to vote yes.
Thank you. Ryan Schuster.
Thank you. This kind of reminds me of what happened several years ago. When several of you weren't on council, we had a trailer park that got purchased up by a large corporation, and the trailer park got closed, and over half the trailers in there were pre-HUD. And a lot of people rented them because that's all they could afford. So, out of that, I think there was like fifty-five spaces, and everybody was turned out. And when we do this, I'm curious to couple things, our trailer houses included. There's a lot of rentals here in town, because that's all they could afford. On Christmas Day, I delivered meals for the Elks Club to anybody that called up, free meals, and I got to see some of the lower-income housing here in town. The biggest thing is, if we go and inspect these, are you now gonna kick some people out because we deem it's inhabitable? Where are they gonna go? Are you gonna create a problem here? One of my biggest things is, is, yes, I agree, there's some substandard places that I wouldn't want my kids to live in. But how are you gonna fix that and not kick people out on the street? Because that's one definite thing we said. We had a person that'd say, for every egress window he puts in, it's thirty-six hundred dollars for that place. I thought that was low.
That's if nothing goes wrong.
That's if nothing goes wrong, okay. Well, that's fine, that's, that's a good statement there. But if I have to put three egress windows in, and I do not own any rental property for people, that if I have to put three of them in, that's, that's eleven grand. And now, if I do this, how long is it before I recruit, re...
Recoup.
Recoup my money? I know what I'm trying to say, my mouth just didn't work. But how long is it gonna take? Because usually, an investor wants about five years. So, let's take eleven grand, divide it by five years, and see how much the rent goes up to put in egress windows. Because I'm not gonna bear that cost. It's gonna be passed on to the renter. And that's one of the biggest things is, that I see here. Everybody thinks, well, he's making tons of money. He can afford to do this and not raise my rent. That's absolutely wrong. I don't know of a landlord here in town that's not gonna raise the rent every time they make an improvement. So, I, I, I'm curious on a lot of these things, and one of my number-one things is, is on those meals that I delivered on Christmas Day, some of the lower ones I saw were trailer houses. So, are they gonna be included in the inspection? Or are we gonna give them a bye, like we're gonna give some of the other places here in town?
And again, that will be determined. Ryan Harrington.
Mayor, I just want to, to address one point real fast, that the purpose, by striking all of the, the language in Section Four, we are effectively removing anything that has been previously addressed in this resolution. We are putting the power into a committee to work on this. So, I just wanna be sure that your comments, Counselor Schuster, are not lost, that we don't know whether we include a trailer or not. We will not know that until the results of a task force are complete and delivered back to council. So, I just wanna clarify that, if, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's correct. Paul Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, for the first time on the amendment that I made, I, I agree with those previous comments. And I would also say that a lot of this reaction was anticipated, certainly by me. Change is difficult, and it often does not happen, happen without controversy. I'm confident, I'm truly confident, that most of the property owners and the vast majority of tenants are not gonna have a lot of concern over this ordinance once the final product is created. The city wants to exercise fairness and caution with this process. That's why you're seeing numerous attempts here to try to bring people to the table to discuss it. But if the alternative is to completely ignore it, as we've heard from members of the public, and even some members of the council, I don't think that's satisfactory, and I agree with the previous council members' comment, that the problem doesn't go away. And I would suggest to you that going through a legislative process at the city council level is a better way to address this problem than, say, by petition or voter referendum, because that'll be the next step. This is a better way to do that. The city wants to exercise fairness. I, I can't emphasize that enough. But to say that the preferred alternative here is just to walk away from this, because some people don't like it, or they're upset about it, or they're worried about the costs that may or may not arise out of it, I don't think that's acceptable. You know, unfortunately, government involvement in the marketplace at every level, federal, state, local, it's sometimes a necessary evil. People don't like to hear that. Although cities and towns in the state of Wyoming are very business-oriented and encourage a free-trade, market-focused environment, basic guidelines sometimes have to be created to ensure fairness and responsibility. Without at least a minimal oversight, a few owners can, will, be able to skew the market in a way that harms not only renters, but the numerous quality owners and operators. Nothing about this proposal is intended to go out of its way to dramatically increase the burden for the majority of property owners. If things are as we hear from property owners here, they're already doing what we're asking. Now, you want to talk about licenses? Well, that may or may not end up in the final draft of this ordinance. The initial draft of this was ahead of our needs and our process, absolutely. Cart before the horse. I think it's reasonable and probably responsible to remove specific code recommendations like those that we have in Section Four now, that this motion intends to remove. From a resolution authorizing staff research, we may, and I would say probably will, go in an independent direction from things like the International Property Management Code. I'll admit, as someone who has to do this himself, dealing with regulation policies can be frustrating. No one wants them. That is, no one wants them until they point in their favor. In other words, they're kind of like all rules. Nobody wants them, nobody wants to follow them, until they do. Ultimately, though, on balance, the benefits outweigh the detriments. Despite the controversy surrounding the idea of safety and health standards for rentals, one thing is clear: A community effort to provide the best possible affordable renters in Laramie is important. A community effort, bringing everybody to the table to participate in the discussion, that is important. And it's an idea whose time has come in this town. Now, we've heard from people that don't think we should ever have it, and we've talked to other people that say we should have done it twenty years ago. It's a difference of opinion, I suppose. I think we should have these things up for discussion. I think this process should continue to move forward. I think we can remove these overly-specific provisions, free up the staff to explore things more broadly, and allow interested stakeholders to suggest their own ideas. I think this is a good amendment. I think allowing this process to continue to go forward is important. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I'll say about the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Any other comments from the council? Jessica.
I'd like to make one comment.
Aaron, we're going to do Jessica first, then we'll come back to you.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment about the amendment, and I think that removing the bullet points and just saying that we're having an ad hoc committee to discuss licensing and inspections, I don't know that we're making a significant change. Although we've removed some of the wording, I think we're still looking at licensing and inspections. And what I would support is an ad hoc committee to maybe support, what are the best practices? Or how do organizations like ASUW communicate with these landlords? Because I've heard a lot of wonderful things tonight, and those are the people that need to be talking to each other. I don't believe that the city needs to have an ad hoc committee or have anything to do with sponsoring licensing and inspections. And just a comment about economic development. I talked to several realtors who mentioned a change in the Laramie real estate market when the Fall Creek subdivision, I believe, was built on Fourth Street, and how that provided a huge influx of very nice units to the market. And local landlords really had to step up their game to compete with that. So I think, Jane, as you mentioned earlier, we're all interested in economic development. And I think that economic development is driven by the market, not necessarily by regulation.
Thank you. Aaron, you're up.
Yeah, that's right.
First, I want to say that some of the concerns that were raised, one is the Fourth Amendment. We're not proposing that we go have search of places without consent. I think it would be simple for the group to come up with something that the inspections could happen at the request of the tenant, or when there's a changeover. So I don't see a conflict with the Fourth Amendment. I think if investors are fleeing Laramie already because we want to research minimal standards for rental, if they're fleeing because we want to just know what we could set up as basic standards, I'm cool with those people leaving town. But, and also, we have young renters who are treated as juveniles insofar as alcohol is concerned, but they are supposed to be aware, when they're eighteen years old, signing the lease, that how to recognize a furnace that could be bad, or the lack of egress windows, or, you know, just how to deal with landlords when you're eighteen. So I think it's reasonable to expect to have some kind of basic rental standards. And it may not require licensing, and I don't think that this proposal says that. I think it says that we're giving the city staff the ability to research this, and they may come up with conclusions that we don't need that because of the law, but how about if we have model leased landlord, or model leases, and that we could advertise properties that use the model lease template? So I think having an ad hoc committee allows us to do that. It doesn't mean that we have to have licenses. And I do own a rental property, and I wasn't at all upset by this, because I thought if it, if I have to pay a hundred bucks for a rental fee, it would just be one of my expenses for the rental. And so it's not going to, it's just going to be subtracted from what my taxes that pay on it, so I wasn't too worried. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Aaron. Just to clarify, the ad hoc committees intend is to work independent of staff and bring their recommendations to the council and to staff, concluding after they had completed their task as a task force or an ad hoc committee. So it's not that this is driven by the city staff, it's being driven by the ad hoc committee. Is that your understanding?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, aren't we still keeping Section Two and Section Three? So if the city manager said, we don't need this because of X, that we would consider that?
I believe you're correct. I believe you are correct. Okay. Jane, did you have your hand up?
I did, and I would just like to remember, remind folks on council that economic development, specifically in Laramie, has benefited greatly by federal, state, and local dollars. So I think it's important that we keep the good of the government involved in economic development.
Thank you. Paul Weaver.
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that this is the only amendment that we're going to consider tonight.
Okay.
Regarding reflecting Sections Two and Three.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council that we have not heard from? Wants to make a comment? Okay, on the amendment, we're going to go to the public. It's a new item. Any comments on the amendment to the resolution that's put forward?
What's the amendment?
The amendment is to strike four. All the items in four. Anything else that's just, and then to form a task force?
Mr. Mayor, it substitutes new language to direct the staff to develop policies for future council consideration, and includes the creation of the ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee, okay.
How difficult would it be to turn the TVs on? I guess it wouldn't have the amendment in it, though, because we're not typing that. But it would let them see Section Four on what's being deleted. Could we, would that be difficult to do? Because I see a lot of people running for their smartphones, but I think if we could put it up there so that they see what's being deleted, might help a little bit.
Thank you. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
That's okay. Technology brings it up. Thank you.
Probably continue to take comment, Mr. Mayor.
While that's coming up, Paul Weaver is asked to continue to make, well, let's see. We're going to take public comments while that's coming up.
Right. That's what I'm requesting.
Yeah, let's do that. Those that are going to make comments about this amendment, go ahead, let's start with the first name on the list.
Sean, Sean Fasinger.
Hello, council. I just have a few clarification points, basically. I want to know where this is coming from, why all of a sudden we are getting this, what statistics or studies have been done to prove that there is an issue. I'm not saying that there isn't, because I think there is. But what kind of issue are we addressing? This seems really a broad topic, and if we had a few studies or some statistics that could back sort of clarification, or direct us in an avenue, which way to go, who to approach, commercial properties, individual owners, this seems so broad that it doesn't have any backing to it. Who or what are we addressing, and why? So I just would like to see more studies and more statistics to give us an avenue and a focus, so.
Deirdre O'Dwyer.
Hello, Deirdre.
Hi. My comment is regarding the portion that says you're going to direct staff to look at regulations or developing for the licensing and the inspection. And I would say that that kind of undermines the autonomy of the ad hoc committee. And if you really are concerned about input from the community, I would start with the ad hoc community input. And so I, my recommendation is to vote it down as written, and to make it isolated, ad hoc committee that's looking at the issue. Because I agree wholeheartedly with what Jessica said, that the landlords and the students need to come together, or tenants, and also, I think that that would provide a great forum in which solutions could come. And I agree that with Pat, there are state regulations already in place. Why are we looking to regulate? And let's advocate education and communication first.
Thanks, Deirdre.
Mr. Mayor, quite of information. The council just voted down exactly what the last speaker suggested.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Correct.
Derek Colling.
Thanks for hearing me again, folks. I've heard what, that there's a problem. What is the problem? We've heard from a couple of UW students that say that they don't like their rentals. What's the problem here? That hasn't even been defined. It's been vaguely alluded to by different councilmen. Listen, creating an ad hoc committee will let the uncertainty linger, and it will affect the market. What you all have done in the last week, or however long this has been proposed, has affected the market. Investors are fleeing this market. Ms. O'Doherty said that, okay, let them leave. Great, you know what happens when investors leave? It floods the market with properties. Do you know what happens then? Property values go down. When your house values go down, ten thousand, twenty thousand, fifty, I don't know, when they go down, how are you going to feel about that? U nine hold a lot of power right now in the Laramie market. This is a very sensitive market. And by creating an ad hoc committee, it's going to let it linger. And you know what investors are going to say? Either timeout, we're not buying, or they're going to say, I'm out of here. That's going to affect property values. Ms. O'Doherty also talks about having basic standards. We have them. We have them already. State and federal law governs that stuff. It's already there. We don't need to recreate the wheel here. Let our market work. It's working, stop messing with it.
Thank you, Derek.
Connor Mullen.
Thanks for having me, everybody. My name's Connor Mullen, I'm a graduate student in town. I've heard and seen a lot of very passionate responses from the council and the audience this evening, and off the record, I'm going to be looking for a place to rent in May, and you all seem very proud of your properties, and I'm a quiet graduate student, I take care of the place, so hit me up, all right? But also, I just wanted to say thanks, everybody, for coming here and being here. Ms. O'Dwyer, I liked your comment. If you need a member from the student population that would be part of that ad hoc committee, I would gladly participate. So thank you all for your time tonight.
Any other comments from the public? Yes. Go ahead, go ahead and speak first, and then sign before you go.
My name is Ellie Risky, and kind of piggyback on what Derek said, I own a property here in town, and I'm looking at purchasing the property right next door. I was actually, my husband and I were drafting a proposal about two weeks ago. This property would not pass any of your guys' standards. So what happens if I buy this property with the aim to fix it up, and in between that, it's inspected? Whether it's lived in at the time or not, the renters there have been there for twenty years. They love it. But what if I purchase that property, and you guys come in and inspect? What violations, while I'm fixing up that property, am I going to incur? And guess what? I did just what Derek said people were going to do. We tossed it. We're waiting. We're not touching that property right now.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make a clarification?
We'll come back to the city council. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Cisneros.
Yep. Welcome back, Mike.
Once again, Mayor Shumway, councilmembers. So, you know, one of the things that we heard you guys say is, let's kind of table a little bit of this and change a few things up, because you guys didn't get enough input from the student population. I'm here to say, I found out about this this morning. I think most of this people in the room have only been in here because they've recently heard about it. These student population had every ample opportunity to be here as we did. We made it a point to be here. You know why? Because we have a vested interest. They don't. Once again, it's really easy to complain about things if you got no input in fixing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glass.
The people that have already signed, do they need to sign a second time?
Yes. Each time you speak, would you please put your name on the list so that we keep the record of that? Go ahead, Brett.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, very briefly, on and for the amendment. I think the amendment is an improvement to the resolution if it does pass. I actually would recommend not passing it, but passing the amendment would at least eliminate the worst alternative, which is passing it in its original form. So on the amendment, I'd say yes, go ahead and pass it, please.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, back to the city council. Brian, I believe you had a comment.
It's sort of been addressed. I just wanted to make sure we were staying the course of talking about the amendment, and there was some conversation about what we are imposing, and the amendment removes anything we are imposing. So I just wanted to make that point of order.
So we'll stay focused, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else on the council before we vote on the amendment? Okay, so this is not the resolution in itself, this is an amendment to the resolution. City Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Schuster.
No.
Stalder.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Gabriel.
No.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's five yeses and four noes, Your Honor.
Okay, so the amendment to the resolution passes, so now we're moving forward with the resolution as amended. Are there any other amendments to the resolution?
Mayor, I would like to move that we remove Section Two and Three pending maybe the city attorney's advice, so that we aren't superseding the ad hoc committee with city staff. Does that make sense?
Okay, so your motion then is to remove Two and Three?
Yeah, I would like to maybe hear from Jane, if possible, before I make my.
Okay, so you want to hear from our city attorney before you ask for a second?
Yeah, I think so, if that's of order.
I'm going to defer to the city manager.
Great, thank you.
Mayor and council, I would offer for you that the resolution, as it has currently been amended, Section Two and Three does provide direction to staff, but candidly, I won't speak for the city attorney, I can't design a program to accomplish your policy objectives until the task force completes its work, brings its recommendations to you, and you then adopt them. So if the order of operations is the question that you're trying to solve by deleting Section Two and Three, I'll share with you, I have no problem with deleting Section Two and Three, but the truth of the matter is, even if you leave it, I can't initiate any design of a program until I know what program you want designed, and that will require conclusion of the task force work and your decision-making. So I don't see that we're going to design anything until the task force and the council are done doing their work, and that's where we step in as professionals and design programs to accomplish our edits. So if you want to delete Two and Three, that's fine. If you don't, I can tell you, we won't be acting on them until such time as task force and council are done with your part of the process.
Okay. With that, I'll just withdraw my amendment then.
Does the second agree to a? That's right. We're moving right along. Any other amendments? Any other discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would say that I think the first best alternative this evening would have been to postpone and come back with a substitute resolution developing the community task force. The council saw fit to vote that down. This is the next best currently available alternative that tries to guarantee some input from everyone that has an interest in this topic, from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Mayor.
Pat Gabriel.
I was just curious, are we going to establish what kind of guidelines? What is the task force actually going to be doing? The guidelines to be implemented by the city, or, it's still not clear to me on what this task force is going to be doing.
Mr. Gabriel, my understanding is the scope of their task is going to be determined by the task force, and what they bring back for our consideration will be driven by them, not us. And so that's probably the best I can give to you, but one thing we did not want to do is have it driven by staff prior to their recommendations. Does that answer that question?
I can't speak to what's required in your motion, but I think if you do vote to set up a committee or task force, that there's going to have to be a second resolution that gives guidance on how, how many, who...
So, you're, what we're saying is that it'd be a resolution that would come before council at a future date, not determined yet, as we prepare that. So, that we have, that would come forward in a future date, not determined by the council, but determined by your ability to prepare it and have it ready for us. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Satisfies me.
All right. Any other discussion on this amendment? Have I asked the public to talk about this yet?
Yes.
Okay, so, seeing no more, seeing no further discussion from the council, we're going to vote on the amendment to the resolution.
We're back on the main motion, Mr. Mayor.
Back to the motion?
Yeah.
We're back to the main motion, as amended. So, this is the, this is the last vote we're going to have on this. After this, it's either going to be approved or it's going to fail. So, that's, this is the vote for the, the resolution as amended. Go ahead, city clerk.
Weaver.
Yes.
Stalder.
No.
Schuster.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty. Erin.
Sorry, I had a thought, yes.
McKinney.
No.
Harrington.
Yes.
Gabriel.
No.
Shumway.
No.
That's four yeses and five noes, Your Honor.
Okay, so that resolution fails. It was mentioned before that this is an issue that has interest in the community, can and may come back, but for right now, that has failed. This resolution has ended today at this point. Okay, now we're going to go to public comments, so...
Thank you, everybody.
Again, everyone, thank you for coming. If you want to stay around and talk about issues other than what we've talked about, you're welcome to do that.
I love it.
Not on the agenda.
You can't bring this up again. Public comments will be items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to the council. Council, are there any of you that would like to make recommendations for future council work sessions or topics for work sessions? Jessica?
Go ahead.
I wanted to recommend a work session to look at parking downtown.
I'll second.
For the historic downtown?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that.
And there's been a second, so that will be an issue for a work session in the future. Brian Schuster.
I would like to discuss bringing public comment back to the front with several rules on it that we can discuss at a work session.
So, a work session.
Second.
So, it's been first and second, okay. So, that's another work session. Any other work session ideas or thoughts? Erin, did you have any?
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't, but I couldn't hear Jessica, but I guess I will find out in a minute.
Jessica's parking downtown, historic downtown, and it's been seconded, so that will be a work session. The other is public comment at the beginning of our council meetings, and there was a second, so that will be also a work session and discussion to our code of conduct. Any other items for the council? Seeing none, Jane Pierce.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.